Good evening and welcome to the April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four Regular Board of Education Meeting. We'll start with the roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Bookta?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Sully?
Here.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Nickram?
Here. I'll start with Pledge Allegiance this evening. And as we do at each beginning of the board meeting, we read our vision and mission statements. Our vision statement reads achieving distinction in all that we do, while our mission statement reads cultivate an inclusive, high-performing culture of growth and community. Moving on to item agenda number two, do we have any, we do not have any comments?
We have no submitted comments and we have no one that has signed up to speak this evening.
Alrighty, thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Yes, Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board in a single motion. Documentation concerning these items have been provided to all board members in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review and will become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. This evening, the board has item A, minutes from the March twenty-one, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. Item B, personnel. This evening, we accept the resignation and retirement requests effective at the end of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That of Annette Hoy, one point O F T E, grade one teacher at Purdy Elementary School, and Linda Dietz, one point O F T E, special education teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle School. We, of course, would like to thank Annette Hoy for her eleven years of service and Linda Dietz for her ten years of service and dedication to the students and our community. Item C, board policy, thirty-two point two update and thirty-three point one update. Item D, the CISA two contract. Item E, gifts to the district. This evening, a donation from the Dwight Foster Public Library, that of a Qiddy Tech iFast three D printer with an approximate value of two thousand dollars for the Fort Atkinson High School Technical Education Program. Also, a donation from Space Saber Corporation of two hundred and fifty dollars for Luther Elementary Field Trips. A donation from the Fort Atkinson Lions Club of a Narcan overdose resource kit for the Fort Atkinson High School. A donation from Quick Trip of Fort Atkinson of coffee and donuts for one hundred people for an approximate value of one hundred and twenty dollars for the Fort Atkinson High School Career Fair. Also, a donation from the Culligan of Fort Atkinson of two hundred bottles of water with an approximate value of one hundred dollars, also for the Fort Atkinson High School Career Fair. Also, a donation from the Jones Dairy Farm of five hundred and fifty dollars and seventy cents for the donation of lunch, also for the Fort Atkinson High School Career Fair. Item F, budget transfer requests, and then item G, payment of district bills and the treasurer's report.
Alright, thank you for that. And do we have anything that we would like to pull out this evening on the consent agenda?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda with no removals.
I'll second.
Alright, motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. Alright, thank you for that. And moving on to non-instruction certification of election results, and if I'm not mistaken, it's Mr. Rogers.
I bet I have something to read, right?
Oh, I didn't have printed out, I apologize. Let me bring that up so you can read it.
Please, I have it.
Okay.
Oh. Okay. Election for the school board was held on Tuesday, April second, twenty twenty-four. The Board of Canvassers convened on April fourth, twenty twenty-four, at three thirty P M. to verify and certify the results. There was one open seat on the school board. Candidate Matt Loop received three thousand one hundred and eighty-nine votes. Elected board member Matt Loop will take office and begin his three-year term as a school board member on Monday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. The district's operating referendum passed with two thousand three hundred and sixty-three yes votes and two thousand two eighty-four no votes. The district is grateful to the community for their participation and support in the April second election.
Alright, thank you. And moving on to budget projections.
Ah, yes, this evening, we have your next two items, budget projections, and then as well as the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five compensation market adjustments presented this evening by Nathan Knitt, our Director of Businesses Services, and Mandy Turnbull, our Director of Human Resources.
Good evening. As Dr. Abbott mentioned, we'll be discussing a joint presentation presented by the Business Office and the Human Resources Department. So first things first, we're going to be looking back at where we came from, looking at, reminding everyone of our budget projections and some changes that have taken place since the preliminary, or not the preliminary, but since the five-year projections were shared. We'll be looking then next at bullet point two, the strategic evaluation of budget decisions. Then I'll hand it over to Mandy to discuss compensation and health insurance, and then we will wrap up with what lies ahead. So looking back and seeing what changes have been made, you'll see here on the chart, this is a very conservative estimate of where we'll be financially for the next couple of years and looking back at where we came from. So we did post a positive balance for last fiscal year. This year, the board approved a deficit budget and using fund balance to, to cover that deficit. And then with the successful passage of the operational referendum, we have those numbers incorporated now for the next three years. So that you see there's still a deficit budget over that three-year period, and then the six and a half million dollars comes off the books for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year and beyond, which is why you see those deficits grow significantly. The piece I do want to continue to remind and caution is that the further out we project, the less reliable. So again, these are numbers, it's not trying to be scare tactics, just if we use our current assumptions projecting forward, what will happen? But there is a lot that's going to change in the future. Multiple state budgets, CPI will continue to change, so we have a lot of things to look forward to or to adjust for. Some of the pieces that we budgeted versus where they're coming out at, so in the five-year projection back in December, January, when presented, we looked at a total compensation increase of four point one two percent. That's where CPI had landed, so we had that plugged in as a placeholder to say, you know, this is what that increase would look like. We also increased our health insurance projections of increase, or sorry, our projected increase for health insurance was fifteen percent based on where inflation is at, that medical providers are seeing inflation hit them as well. Historically, we would look at a ten percent-ish increase, but wanted to be prepared, again, knowing that inflation is still, still an issue for the everyday consumer, that that's something we should be aware of as well. So we budgeted fifteen percent, again, as a placeholder to show what that impact would be. CPI was certified by the Wisconsin Employment Relations Committee at four point one two percent, so that is matching, but there's also the potential for market increases, which Mandy will highlight in a few minutes. The good news that we've received, again, Mandy will talk a lot more in depth about this, health insurance came in much lower than expected, so that came in at eight point five percent. So again, back on the charts here, that was building in fifteen percent, and for next year, we're looking at eight and a half. The other piece that we're continuing, or pieces that we're continuing to monitor are the expected increases in costs, again, utilities, transportation, you name it, we're, we're thinking about what those increases look like versus the twenty-three, twenty-five biennial budget. So we do know for certain that next year, we are receiving an additional three hundred twenty-five dollars per student under the revenue limit. So we can take our enrollment, multiply by three twenty-five, and that's our expected additional increase in state funding. Then looking, you know, how are we using these projections, how are we looking at, you know, making budget decisions? The slide here is a reminder of the priorities that the board has laid out for the district to work with, that we want to provide a competitive compensation and benefit package for all staff for this year and projecting out into the future. We continue to monitor and right-size our staff to align to the needs of our students and the needs of our future students. We do take a close look at all vacancies for a pot, for possible attrition or restructuring. That again, we know we have a deficit over the next three years to make up for, so any chance we get to address that through restructuring, we're going to look into that and do what we can. And then we continue to analyze our current programming to make sure that we are prioritizing the return on investment and recognize opportunities for that strategic abandonment. So those were the priorities, and here's what we've done recently to be in alignment with those strategies. Right sizing's the biggest one, that we looked at the cuts that we needed to make last year, or cuts for this year to address a lot of those concerns. And again, as staff decide to leave the district, we continue to evaluate those vacancies. The piece that we're excited to discuss, or again, Mandy will discuss in more detail, is providing that competitive benefit package, that we are maintaining our health insurance structure. So that's encouraging and exciting. The last piece is we fully funded the market adjustments for the school year and provided a CPI increase of four percent. So again, highlighting that we're remaining as competitive as possible compared to other districts in the area. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Human Resources, Mandy Turnbull.
Thank you, Nathan, and good evening. As you've heard time and time again, staff are our biggest expense as a district, making up somewhere around eighty percent of our budget. This evening, I'll be sharing some important updates and recommendations related to compensation for our staff and our health insurance benefits, two of the biggest drivers of our staff as a budget item. First, I'll share just a brief overview of our compensation system. Our current compensation system was implemented in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and was based on three mutual interests. Attract and retain high-quality employees, reward for doing a good job, or cost of living adjustment, and to honor experience and longevity. Our compensation system is a market-based system in which we gather new data every year for every position. We gather this information from a group of comparable districts, which has been identified by each staff group, using factors including size, distance, enrollment, and others. Our system continues to evolve through the unappeals process, which provides the opportunity for adjustments to be made each year as our environment changes and the system further develops. We have a lot of celebrations when it comes to our compensation system. First, we use real data in all hiring decisions. This keeps us consistent in our practice, legally protected, and competitive with our comparable districts. Second, all of our employees know their market rates are based on real data. They know that they're being compensated fairly and in line with what their peers in other districts are making. We're also able to make decisions about compensation adjustment requests using current year market data and a formal appeals process, which engages multiple individuals, including you all as the board, versus just one or two people. This process is instrumental in considering growth opportunities within the system. Finally, the use of market comparable data is continuing to grow and expand as a regional and more recently statewide effort, with over fifty participating districts currently. The school district of Fort Atkinson has been and continues to be highlighted within that initiative for our sustained and systematic use of that data in our compensation system. The recommendations for twenty-four, twenty-five are to provide both full market increases and full longevity increases to all eligible staff across all staff groups. Now, I'll dive into what those recommendations actually look like, broken down by each staff group. Here, you can see the analysis for our administrative group, which includes both certified and non-certified administrators. This year, we were able to collect and use current year data from twelve out of our eighteen comparable districts, with year-old data being used for the remaining six, and that data comes from the state staffing report from DPI. The overall increase for this group is one point four percent. For our certified staff group, we were able to collect current year data from fourteen out of our sixteen comparable districts, which I believe is the highest number since the implementation of our system of districts that we were able to get current year data for, which is really impressive. Similar to administrators, year-old data was collected through DPI's annual staffing report for those remaining two districts we didn't have current year data for. For our certified staff group, we see an overall market increase of two point three four percent. A couple of points of interest in this particular group are that the average increase between five-year bands is eight point one percent, or just under five thousand dollars, and the average difference between a bachelor's and master's degree is right around forty-five, forty-five hundred dollars. This information is paramount in expressing to staff the value of their dedication and longevity to the district and their careers, as well as the monetary value of continuing their education. Finally, we have our support staff analysis, which shows an overall wage increase of one point three three percent. What's most exciting about this data is that we continue to use actual pay data for specific employees in very specific roles to determine our hiring medians. This group is limited to only being able to use data from districts that participate in the compensation partnership, as DPI does not include support staff compensation data as part of their annual staffing report. Because of the continued growth of the compensation initiative, this data continues to become more accurate, which I believe is evidenced by our alignment to median values within our market analysis. So taking a look at all of the data together, you can see that we projected a four point one two percent overall compensation increase within our budget, which Nathan talked a little bit about. Historically, market adjustments account for about one percent of our compensation projection annually. This year, we see that number at two point zero two percent. I believe this is a testament to our compensation system and the purpose it serves. Each and every year, through the board's approval, our system recalibrates to market median, taking into account the economic climate and the tolerance of school districts to rage, to raise wages in line with the cost of living. For twenty-three, twenty-four, CPI was at its highest point in over forty years, at eight percent. Given the district's budget constraints, a cost of living adjustment of four percent was provided. Seeing our overall market adjustment at just over two percent for twenty-four, twenty-five tell us we may have awarded CPI just slightly lower than some of our comparables, but it puts us right back where we need to be beginning in twenty-four, twenty-five, so we're not falling behind in terms of compensation or comparability to our peers. So to recap the recommendations I shared with you prior to the market analysis financial data, I'm proposing tonight the board's approval of the recommendation to provide both a full market increase as well as full longevity increases to all eligible staff, which puts us at that two point zero two percent mark. We'll continue our compensation work moving forward as we begin negotiations with FIA in consideration of other staff groups with regard to any potential cost of living adjustments in the weeks and months to come. Of the staff groups just discussed, certified staff are also issued contracts annually for their positions as approved by the board. With that, I'm requesting the board consider approval of the issuance of contracts for the certified staff group to include the compensation adjustments as proposed. Contracts would be issued to all certified staff as professionally trained educators rather than containing specific assignments. This was a change we made last year for twenty-three, twenty-four that we intend to carry forward into this year and beyond, which puts us in greater alignment with other districts as well as legal recommendations. The other item that is significant in terms of expenses to the district is our health insurance, so I will be talking a little bit about what our health insurance renewal looks like. I'm pleased to share that for twenty-four, twenty-five plan year, we will see no plan design or coverage changes to our health plan. With that, we'll continue our existing employee, employer premium share split, which has the district paying eighty-seven point four percent of the overall premium cost and employees being responsible for twelve point six percent of that overall premium cost. We'll also continue to fund our staff health savings accounts on the same schedule and at the same amount as we have this year and in the past, which leaves our staff with a two hundred and fifty single or five hundred dollar family deductible experience. To support the continuation of our quality health plan for this year and beyond, we'll also continue to educate staff on consumerism, but by providing information on costs for care at various locations. So think emergency room versus urgent care versus office visits and so on. We'll share information on prescription drug costs and generic drug options, and continue to promote our partnership with the School Employee Wellness Clinic, where staff can be seen for a twenty dollar office visit and five dollar lab charge, which, if you've gotten any medical bills in the mail lately, you know is a bargain. As Nathan shared at the beginning of this presentation, our budget projections included a fifteen percent increase to our overall health insurance premiums. This was based on health insurance renewal trends as well as medical inflation. Fortunately, we initially received a renewal lower than anticipated at eleven point nine percent. Our brokers went to that for us and were able to get that number lowered to the final of eight point five percent as an increase. Aside from medical inflation, which ended up being seven point four percent for twenty twenty-three, one of the largest drivers of our renewal is our medical loss ratio, which has remained relatively stable at one hundred percent at the time of our plan renewal. This means that we paid in the same amount in premiums as the plan paid out in claims for our members, so the goal is always to be at or below one hundred percent, so we're running relatively well. In addition to offering a high-quality and comprehensive health plan to our staff, we intend to continue providing our full package of voluntary benefits to our staff, which is on the screen. This includes district-paid benefits of dental insurance, long-term disability insurance, and life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance. We also provide the opportunity for staff to enroll in vision, short-term disability insurance, voluntary life insurance, which would be additional for themselves and their families, accident insurance, and critical illness insurance at their own expense, but at affordable group rates. All of these benefit offerings are cost-neutral with rate guarantees in place until twenty twenty-six. Several of these benefits were additions to our offerings last year and have well, have been well-received by staff. They were responsive to requests from staff that we had received and do set us apart from other school districts in our area who have not made the move to offering some of the more progressive benefit options to their staff. Staff can look forward to information being rolled out about our benefits and annual open enrollment beginning next week. So now that I've shared some updated information with you about our anticipated compensation and health insurance costs for twenty-four, twenty-five, Nathan will walk us through how these numbers might impact our financial forecasting for the next year and beyond.
Thank you, Mandy. So again, looking back at where we were come December, January with our preliminary five-year forecast, the results of the very favorable health insurance increase is going to save the district about three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for next year and each year after that, and that will compound. Again, that will be showed visually in all budget presentations going forward, but just to highlight, this is the last time you're going to see this chart, and it's going to look more favorable going forward. So our work going forward, speaking of that, we continue to right-size to align to enrollment programs, again, focusing on the needs of our students, that at the end of the day, well, and the beginning of the day, we are here for the students here at the Fort Atkinson School District. We continue to be strategic in the evaluation of vacancies, and we're prioritizing the return on academic investment, and again, always looking to do what's best for kids. In the Business Office, we'll continue to monitor economic trends, so with CPI being four point one two percent for this upcoming year, we're seeing inflation come down a little bit, that business managers, business managers across the state collaborate and discuss with each other what they're seeing in their communities, talk about CPI on a monthly basis, and we're seeing it at about three point five percent currently. Really, like, as of, like, effective today, but that wouldn't be for future school years. But we continue to monitor that and how does CPI affect the cost of, cost of increased expenses for health insurance, for supplies, everything, so we're continuing to take a look at that. All of that being said, we continue to take a long-term approach for planning and making decisions. We want to make the best decisions today, but also make the best decisions that position us to be in the best possible position in future years. So again, as Mandy highlighted, the resolutions for consideration are the proposed market adjustments and the issuance of certified staff contracts. With that being said, what questions does the board have?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, just, if, just kind of two comments or, you know, in regards to health insurance, can you walk me through, obviously, coming down from eleven point nine to eight point five, can you walk me through how that occurred and the steps that, that was taken?
Sure, so our, our health insurance brokers, Cottingham and Butler, work directly with our health plan through the renewal process. So they were able to highlight a number of different items that they felt perhaps the health plan wasn't taking into account when moving for, when proposing that first increase of eleven point nine percent. One of the largest items in that negotiation were pharmaceutical refunds, so the health plan takes into account all of the pharmaceutical expenses that occurred within our medical loss ratio, but oftentimes doesn't disclose the fact that they're actually getting a large percentage of those expenses back in different refunds and rebates from the pharmaceutical companies. So that paired with a couple of years of good plan performance and some high-class cost claimants, looking more favorable in the next year, they were able to negotiate that down to a better rate.
Yeah, I mean, having little, little background in this, like, eight and a half percent is pretty remarkable, you know, given, given especially where we're at and where we've been, so thank you, thank you for that. you for that.
Could I, just before you move on, if you wouldn't mind, so just, the board may remember that Mrs. Turnbull worked through a process of looking for different brokerages over the last couple of years and suggested and recommended, and we eventually did switch to Cottingham and Butler. So I would say that they are more aggressive and they're definitely more attuned and in tune as to what our needs are and where it is that we want and need to go. So certainly, Mandy and our brokerages had a lot to play in getting that negotiated down. And also, on one of the slides, Mandy pointed out some additional coverages that were available to staff at their expense, but are things that others have been able to offer that we weren't until we changed brokerages, and they have been received very favorably. So it's a great example of how doing some research and perhaps in some cases bringing in a different team to do certain parts of things for us can be very favorable financially as well as for really pretty incredible benefits that remain in place for our district. So, thank you.
It's great to highlight that.
And so with health insurance, does each district have to negotiate on their own for the insurance that they're looking for coverage for?
Yes. Yep. And every renewal is specific to the individual district. So some districts actually still are under rate caps, which I believe we, as others who aren't, are probably subsidizing what those folks are not paying under those rate caps. Every group has very specific calculations, though, related to medical loss ratio, related to the number in health insurance, they call them belly buttons, of belly buttons on your plan. So how many people per employee and so on and so forth. So we receive a very detailed calculation that ultimately determines our renewal.
Right. So it probably takes a lot of time. There's no consortium of districts that can get together and negotiate with health insurance as a collective. It's individually-based, and so the school district of Fort Atkinson is offering these health insurance benefits as a standalone employer?
Yes. A lot of our comparable districts do use the same health plan as we do in order to combat some rising premiums or unfavorable renewals. Some have chosen to change plan design, adding co-pays, increasing deductibles, and so on. We've been fortunate that we have not been in that place to this point.
Including increasing employee share in some cases. And I think the board's foresight in moving the district towards a health savings account for all employees a couple of two or three years ago has also continued to position us well to get the information that you are this evening. So, I mean, some of this is strategy, you know, that has worked very favorably as well. Our coverage and our experience, as Mandy would say, for our employees related to health insurance is really, you know, heads above other districts certainly in the area.
And the 8.5% represents no change in the benefits?
Correct. Yep. Our plan design will stay exactly the same.
And I have a question about comparable districts. So you keep talking about comparable districts, and I know we kind of understand, but could you elaborate on what makes a comparable district and then what are some of them around here? So that way, the public has more of an idea about that.
So in 2015-16, when the compensation system was founded, there were actually employee groups created that discussed that exact question that you're asking. What makes a comparable district and who do we want to use? And those groups do vary slightly between our different staff groups. So the comparable district group, for example, for support staff, is not the same as it is for certified staff. Different factors were considered, you know, for an administrative position, that group reaches out further. Perhaps somebody would relocate for an administrative position. For certified staff, I believe it's the Badger Conference, there was conversation about who do we compare to in athletics and academics. And then for support staff, that group is a little bit more narrow, knowing that some of our part-time or hourly folks aren't going to travel quite as far as, you know, somebody in a full-time position on the salary might. So if you'd like, a couple of the districts that we compared to, several are Madison area, Oregon, DeForest, Wanachee, Milton, I believe is on our support staff, or our certified staff and administrative staff, whereas Edgerton is on support staff, but they're all within a pretty close radius to us. Thank you.
Staying on those comparables since you're up there, and then I'll bring Nathan over. Staying on those comparables. So can you explain what we're looking to do with a market increase and a longevity increase? What do those exactly mean?
So the market increase is the market median for the position or group of positions. Again, we have grouped like positions where we can to ensure that we have enough data to get a reliable market median. So the median means for administrative and support staff, we don't have those five-year bands like we do for certified. So for those, it's just bringing staff up to whatever the market median is across the board. For certified staff, that includes going up to median if that's higher than where their current salary is. If they've moved from a bachelor's to a master's degree, we have two different kind of tracks, so they could get that increase moving to a master's degree. And then they also get another year of experience awarded to them. Our certified staff is broken into five-year increments. So if somebody this year was at four years, next year they would move up to that band, to that five-to-nine-year band.
Okay. So like for our certified staff, there are payroll bands, and that's based on years of service within the district as well as education?
Certified staff is based on total years of experience, like total years of experience in as a certified educator.
Okay. So total certified years of teaching. So you could come in as 20 years and you would be in that 20-year band?
Correct. And then administrators and support staff, longevity is specific to local experience.
And every year with the comparables, since the 2015-16, we go once a year and look at the averages and say, okay, across those like-positioned districts, we're going to look at the average. And for those people whose salaries are below that average, let's bring them up. Because otherwise, we start slipping for those positions lower and lower.
Correct. Yep. We use the median value, and we have a very intensive data scrubbing process where we make sure to analyze things. We don't use partial positions on either end. We take out any outliers and so on to make sure that we've got really good, solid data for what those values should be.
And that data, those comparables are based on salary, not based on salary plus insurance benefits and the whole person package of what you would be coming here getting, but it's based on the salary that the person receives?
Yes.
And what did the savings in the projections, so now Nathan, I'm going to go to you for a few questions. So the projections that you showed today with the budget forecast, that includes the 4.12%, or the, I should say, it includes the market and the longevity increases if approved tonight?
It includes the 4.12 built in the budget projections is everything compensation or everything salary-related. So we don't delineate within the budget on market adjustments versus CPI, that we put one number in that's encompassing as a placeholder, understanding the board can move at its discretion to say, you know, we want to do more, we want to do less. So we put a placeholder in to highlight, you know, we're not going to say, because I don't know what the market adjustment is going to be or the salary increases, I'm not going to plug in a zero, because then that sends off alarms that, hey, there's no salary increases for next year. So we put a placeholder number in, and that's...
And is that 4.12 a projection for each year, a 4.12 increase projection for each year looking at that forecast?
It's 4.12 for the 2425 school year and then a placeholder of 3% for every year going forward.
3%. And then for health insurance, it's adjusted for that 8.5% increase that we're seeing, or does this include the 15?
This currently includes the 15. Every projection you see going forward, I'll have the 8.5% for 2425 only. I won't project the 8.5 every year in the future. I'll still stick with a 10 to 15%.
Yeah, expecting that we got a good number this year, but not necessarily in future years.
Yep.
What, do you know what that difference between the 15 and the 8.5%, do you know what that translates into in numbers?
Yep. It was, over the three-year period, it was $1.1 million. So I don't remember the exact amount for 2425. It was about $325,000. So then you'd have that $325,000 savings each year, and for years two and three, you'd have the compounded 15% savings as well. So that's why you get, you know, 325 times three is 975, plus the compounding gets you to $1.1 million over the three-year period.
And the health insurance is an annual renewal, so every year we have to put in some projection of what that percentage is going to be?
Correct.
Okay. Can you explain what you meant by real data? That we use real data when we're looking at compensation and we're looking at salary and stuff versus, I guess, fake data?
So rather than taking, for example, another district's salary schedule and saying, okay, so hypothetical person X makes this amount with one year of experience and a bachelor's degree, through this compensation partnership, we can actually poll and say, okay, for this year, these are the names of all of the people in all of our comparable districts. These are how many years of experience they have. This is the exact subject they teach. This is the exact degree that they have, and this is their exact salary. So if a district deviates from a salary schedule or if they don't have a salary schedule, you know, we still have that data. We know what they're paying. We know, you know, what they've awarded as CPI, and we know that that's calculated in there and so on.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I'm done. With my inquisition.
Any other questions, thoughts, ideas? Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. And item C here, compensation market adjustments. We have a resolution here.
I mean, before the resolution, I just want to say that I think it really is important that we stay competitive with our salaries. And we're not saying we're going to the top of the band. We're not saying we're paying the most of all these districts. I think that it's fair to look at, you know, 14, 16, 18, you know, I think you said 14 districts for one and 18 or 16 for another, who we were able to get numbers from. This is what keeps us competitive, and I think that we know that it's really important to be competitive with our compensation and our benefits for our staff. I think this is a good way for us to stay true to, you know, if we had a mass exodus of people leaving, it would probably be because we are underpaying our staff. So I think it is really important to continue this model and continue to stay true to it. We saw CPI go crazy last year, I mean, at 8%. And probably not a lot of people were getting 8% raises from employers, but that's how much you were having to pay when you're going places, and that's how much the cost of living was, you know, increasing. So I think it's really important in this model, and I appreciate all your effort for collecting all this data and making these, you know, recommendations of what the board can do to keep competitive salaries and all your work for the insurance, too. And I think that, you know, with the insurance going not as high of a percentage increase, I think that, you know, that shows our due diligence, that we want to stay competitive in the market.
Yeah, I remember very specifically at some point last year, thinking that this scenario that we're in right now, we were going to run into, right? You know, we saw other districts run at 80% at times and, you know, other districts run more or less than what we did. But, you know, so when this number came about for this board meeting, it was not a surprising number to me. I remember just kind of thinking ahead that this was going to hit us at some point. And I'm certainly proud that we're staying consistent with the model that we have here, and I think it's fair, and I'm glad we implemented it when we did, so.
So with that, anybody else? Or should we, be it resolved that the school district of Fort Atkinson adopt the following compensation structure for the 2425 fiscal year, that practices from the implementation of the compensation model in 2324 be carried forward, increase staff pay rates, which were identified to be below their respective market value analysis median to their market value analysis median, which equates to approximately $441,941 for all staff, recognize another year of service towards market value placement for certified staff, and longevity salary adjustment for all groups, approximately $16,578 for all groups, other than certified staff market value placement adjustments, that no adjustment in pay will be awarded to those having an active improvement plan on the first day of work in the 2425 fiscal year.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Selly, a second by Ms. Rogers, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right. Moving on to open negotiations with Fort Atkinson Education Association.
Yes. So as another piece of this puzzle that we've been working through over the last half hour or so, is the need to open negotiations with FIA. We are asking that the board do so this evening so that we could potentially get together with your board subcommittee and then subsequently with FIA yet this spring. We're hoping to get the ball rolling with those negotiations. So that does require your action this evening. We do have a request for a special meeting from a board member. So unrelated to your initial resolution, we are asking that you consider Tuesday, April 23 at 5:45 PM as a closed session meeting so that the board can discuss negotiation information relative to their position moving forward.
So this is essentially just a motion so that we can start negotiating with FIA for what salary increase may or may not be for next year?
Yes. So as we've been bantering around with CPI, that essentially is code for like what are the potential negotiated amounts of additional salary that could be done through
All right. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve opening base wage negotiations with Fort Atkinson Education Association for the collective bargaining agreement covering the 2425 school year.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Selly, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And those both. Okay. Good. And we have that.
And then the motion for the closed session?
We have the request. If you want to take the resolution, it's written there for you. We might as well, and it's not explicitly required, but why not?
Sure. I'm on a roll. Be it resolved that a closed session, special Board of Education meeting be conducted on Tuesday, April 23, 2024 at 5:45 PM to address establishing the school board's negotiating parameters and bargaining strategy relating to base wage bargaining with Fort Atkinson Education Association for the collective bargaining agreement covering the 2425 school year.
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Selly, a second by Ms. Rogers, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And those both. All right. Carrying on to the individual certified staff contracts.
Nothing makes opening a new school year easier when you have teachers to teach in classrooms. So this is the annual process the board needs to engage in in order for our human resources department to get individual certified staff their contracts for next year. And with your actions this evening, it allows those contracts to be as up-to-date as possible related to compensation system updates and other information pertinent to their benefits. So thank you for your action on those this evening. It really does help people see a more true contract as to what things might look like for them unrelated to the negotiated salary agreement moving forward.
Yeah, that was going to be my question is, so these would be contracts next year based on the adjustments, the market adjustments, longevity adjustments that people would realize for the 2425 school year, but it would likely not include the negotiations with FIA for any overall salary increase?
It would not. And I think every time I'm asked, I'm told it states not to be less than X number of dollars. So, did I get that right? Yes, all right.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the issuance of individual employment contracts and additional contract days as proposed for the certified staff for the 2024-25 school year. I so move.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. All right, we have a motion by Ms. Rogers, a second by Ms. Bookta, and a roll call, please, Ms. House.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All righty, thank you for that. And now moving on to items for future board meetings.
Yes, we have a number of different items. Among them will include high school textbook adoptions, open enrollment requests, a school nursing services update, of course, the second read of your policy addendums that were offered in your consent agenda this evening, among other items.
Lots going on.
So before we adjourn, I do have a couple of things I wanted to just, the career fair at the high school, it was a remarkable program that was put on. Angie Salamone, you know, led it, and I'm sure there were lots of other people who were involved, but just a great program, just a really nice partnership between the community and the high school walked through there. I mean, it was crowded, it was busy. Everybody said that the students were really respectful, that they were interested, that they asked great questions. So this is like, we were doing it once every three years, and now we're doing it every year, and I just think it's such a great opportunity to have the community and the students be able to interact and for students to be able to see potential career paths, potential higher education paths. I also wanted to mention the referendum. We've talked so much at every board meeting about the referendum that I don't think it can go by without saying that the passage of the referendum, I think, was a great endorsement by the community that we're doing things in the right way, and that we will continue to work hard to do things the right way, and all the things that Nathan talked about, and making sure our budget is fiscally responsible, but that we're also a good employer to our teachers, because at the end of the day, it's about the students, and if we don't have good staff and good teachers and good administrators and support staff, then our, then we're failing our students. And the last thing I wanted to say was thank you to Rona Bookta for serving on the board. This is your last official board meeting, and, you know, they're three-year terms, and at the beginning, three years seems like a long time, and you've probably felt like it was three long, long, long
It's been a long time.
Peasy, peasy.
They're not that long.
At the end of COVID, with budgets and all that stuff, so just want to thank you, Rona, for your
Absolutely.
Time on the board, greatly appreciated for all your input and all your work.
Well, thank you for all of you guys, our admins. Couldn't have worked with better people for sure. It is bittersweet, the Lord's sword is always, humbling. I think that it is a great opportunity for myself to show not only my students and everyone else that, you know, you can do it. I survived after three years, but I learned a lot. And I think that being in this position, I understand more, and as a result, I learned more, and I think that that's really all we wanted to do. So it's almost as if I was a student here, because we learn every day. And, you know, we have a really good district, a good school system, wonderful teachers, I have a lot of confidence in what's going to happen in the future. Every one of you guys should be proud of yourselves because you guys work very hard. And if anyone doubts that, I can tell you right now, many, many hours does everyone here work, and not just for themselves, but for our kids and for everybody else. And so I, I, I thank you for all of that. I just get to come here and talk on the mic, so, but, no, I, I feel that it's been a, it's been a privilege to be here for the last three years, so I thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yes, and we'll thank you officially at the annual meeting. As is customary, we'll thank you formally at our annual meeting in August.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Oh, should I do that? Oh, yeah, thank you.
You can't, you can't, and second, you have to just do one, so.
Oh, okay, well, I'll, I'll say the whole thing, here we go. Be it resolved that the Board of Education adjourn?
I'll second.
All right, a motion by Ms. Bookta, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed. All right, to adjourn at 6:23 this evening.